Let's begin by standing for the pledge of allegiance from Mr. Lucky. If you would please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I want to remind everyone, if you're not familiar with our office, if you need to use the restroom, the restrooms are right outside in the foyer. And just, you know, if there's anything else you need, if you need water or anything to make our time together more comfortable, please just ask and we'll make sure that you have it. So, you're probably, as you know, we have held two of these meetings in the past four years. We did not have one last year. And so, obviously, it was time to have one again this year. I don't know if it's in your board policies. But I think it's really good that our entities get together because although Glaze County is small, we do have a lot of things that we need to discuss. And I think the groups together are stronger than when we are divided and on our own course. So, we wanted to start the meeting and just bring up some things that were topics to have conversations. And this is, this meeting is being recorded. And it will be posted on our website, just where everyone knows that upfront as well. And I'm going to follow the agenda and each have in front of you. And so, I'll just go ahead and start with where we are, with some of the things that we have, that we want to address. And I'm going to go ahead and start with the new elementary school. And I'll have Mr. Gressett, if you want to start with that. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
So, right now, as far as construction of the new elementary school, we are actually on time and we are a little bit under budget. So, things are going great. I think what we can do is we could show you a video of where we are right now. You're actually going to see both the elementary school and the bus garage. The bus garage is right behind us right now. We're hoping to have the bus garage ready to go by June 1st. So, we're almost done with that. Just a reminder, part of the grant that we received, we received about $52 million from the state. That money was established for every certain part of the school that they could. They're trying to think of everything, of course, but there are going to be things they wouldn't think of. But there are actually four parts to the grant. One is to build a new elementary school. The second, because the elementary school needs the property where the bus garage is, there is money in the budget to build the new bus garage. Because we are building the new school, we're going to tear down the elementary school, which is the third part. We're also going to lose the portables that are behind the elementary school, which house a lot of our district offices. So, the plan is part four, actually, part three is going to be to refurbish the, I guess you call it, the fifth and sixth grade building, which is on the southeast corner of the elementary school. And also, the...
Richie Building.
Richie Building, again. The Richie Building, we're going to use more for training purposes. The fifth and sixth grade building is going to be in the district offices. So, we can go ahead and run this. Yeah, that was taken today. And Mr. Riley is here from Weisman Construction. He's actually the photographer for this. He runs the drone. We started last, we started September, yeah. Come along, boy. The old bus barn will be knocked down in early June. That's actually a place for retention pond. We had to have a retention pond for this build, of course. And here's the new bus garage. And it's still light outside. I've got six hard hats that we can, if you want to take a tour in there, we can do that. See what it looks like in there.
No lights, that's it.
No, left and center on for buses, okay. Any questions on the new builds or new construction? We're very excited. We're planning on starting to move in in December. And we should have students in there for the second semester in January.
Okay, the next thing that we have that I wanted to present to everyone, I'm going to have Dan Thomas, who's our Director of Administrative Services, talk about. We are looking at a trial of safety mission and site stream. And he can tell you what that is, because it'll affect everybody in this room.
Okay, hi, everybody. We are, as you know, we lease the electric bus fleet from a company. The company's named Highland Electric Fleet. They were here back in February or January to do ribbon cutting. And we were very gracious to them, so they kind of liked us. And they want to pilot a program where they put stop-arm cameras onto our buses. And these stop-arm cameras are designed to detect people that are illegally passing the buses when the stoparms are out. So, it's a huge safety concern for our students. What this will do is, the cameras will detect the license plate of the vehicle that passes the bus illegally. And then, that information will be sent to someone from the Sheriff's Department, where they will review it and either approve of issuing a citation or not. That citation then gets sent to the person who owns the vehicle. And then, there will be a monetary fine involved, of which we get a portion. Of course, the goal is to produce a safer environment for our students and their busing. A little bit of money with that. This is going to require the cooperation of several entities in Glaze County, including the school board, Sheriff's Department, county commissioners. We had a meeting with the company yesterday, which they went over it extensively. And we had a lot of questions to ask, a lot of questions answered. We're still in the planning phases. Hopefully, we can get what we call a beta test started in May. The company wants four weeks of data from a couple of buses. We'll put the cameras on a bus in LaBelle and a bus here in More Haven, where they will start collecting data to see if there's even a need. Anecdotally, my bus drivers told me that there is. But when we get four weeks of data behind us, they'll make a determination, the company, as to whether or not they want to invest in putting those on our buses. It will not have a cost to the school board. This company is going to put these onto the buses. They simply want part of any of the fines. With any kind of blessing out of all this, we will start seeing a much safer traffic situation for our buses. It is, from what I'm hearing from my drivers, that's getting out of hand. So, I'm kind of looking forward to seeing if we can improve this situation for our bus drivers and our students.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, for a small fee, I'll tell you where to put the cameras and where to get the most. But I want a nominal fee, I'm not doing it for free.
But it's coming out of the tickets.
I don't care how you pay it.
Right now, okay.
Somebody get one book and read, because that's where it's made of.
It's really bad on 78. I see it all the time.
I should add that a component to the stop-arm cameras is Wi-Fi. It will connect to cellular network and send the information that way. It doesn't take much Wi-Fi signal to get this information. There's a lot of, basically, Wi-Fi not being used. One of the things we're negotiating with the company is, if there's Wi-Fi on a bus, can our students have access to it to do homework? So, that's a side advantage that we're hopefully going to get straightened out. And that will be a huge help for our students, because if these guys have a 45-minute bus ride home, that'd be a great time to do homework, so.
While you're standing, can you also address, we've had a couple of questions, about sidewalks, crosswalks, that sort of thing, and the county and here in the city. Is there anything that you can tell us about that?
So, as you guys know, we're constructing a new school. That's going to create a whole different walking traffic pattern for our students that don't ride a bus to school. They come from, you know, the neighborhood to the south of 27. But especially the neighborhood to the north of 27, getting across Highway 27 into the new school, a whole new pattern of walking for them. There are some existing sidewalks, but we need to improve that. There is a young lady that I met a few weeks ago at a CTST meeting at the Sheriff's Department, who says she's going to work with us, I'm sorry, I don't have her name, but she's a wonderful person. She's going to work with us, see if we can find some money to make some new sidewalks happen. We also are trying to figure out ways, or Board Member Drake and I are trying to figure out ways, to get the state to pay us to bus those kids across, because it's a pretty dangerous walk. So, we're doing a lot of research into that, see if we can get some things changed to make it safer for our students. And you may hear more of that from us later, to let you guys know what we're going to be doing. But there will be some sidewalks, hopefully some, maybe some beefing up of these schools on through here.
Is there not a normal bus route that...
We do, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, pardon me. We do currently bus those students. We bus them, we want to be clear about that. But we don't get reimbursed for it. So, it's a pretty tremendous cost to us. And we'd like to get what they call FTD on that. So, that's why we're talking about this thing called the hazardous one, isn't it?
Dan, they probably don't understand that, what we're funded for and what we're not funded for.
Sure.
So, if you would explain that, I think we'd know.
So, the state law says that within a two-mile radius of the school, we don't get reimbursed for busing. Not that we don't bus, but we don't get reimbursed for the busing. That, a large number of our students live within two miles. And a large number of our students live on the other side of 27. So, we would like to have the state designate areas that are unsafe for the students to pass through. And that way, we can get reimbursed for the busing that we already do. It's difficult. The state has been, at least once, took a look at it and denied it. So, we are working on giving them more information, asking them to come back and do more surveys. They have a very convoluted set of rules that explains how they determine whether or not it is safe or unsafe. And Ms. Drake and I believe that we fit that rule. We just have to convince them, so we're working on it.
Has anyone discussed dropping the speed limit out there on 27?
We haven't, that's a state board transportation...
So, you've had no discussions with them at all?
Well, I can't say that we haven't had any discussions with them. But regarding that specifically, I can't say that I brought that up. But I would, you have to do.
I think with the purpose of that property out there, you may be able to get it lowered to more than five, I'm 100% sure. I'd take a shot at it.
Absolutely.
With moving the elementary school east, have you considered moving the crosswalk east as well?
Well, that's another, the manning the crosswalk is one of the reasons that we're kind of being denied the hazardous walk designation. However, it is so far east that it would definitely move further south. Or another one added on this end, which is they're going to come with the cost of having to pay for the person that manns it.
And I noticed on Wink News the other night that one of the high elementary schools in the county has put up a deal where it takes the camera. When they fly through the speed zone, have we thought about doing something like that?
We are, we haven't specifically talked about that. Right now, we're working on the stoparms for the buses. I believe Henry County is doing that, right?
They are.
And so, it's certainly something that we are willing to look at. Is that something the school board determines, or... We will have that discussion.
All right, I got to leave. So, a couple of things on that. You're going to have to get it designated as a school zone from DOT. So, the school board would have to get with DOT to get a designated school zone, which I don't, I've been told that it's been asked and denied, but I don't understand why DOT would deny your school zone for the one that you have here on Sixth Street, or even for one on 27 there. But that's, to put the speed cameras through those, you would have to have the school zone designated to put the speed cameras in those locations. But I think the school speed zone in those locations, both locations, I don't know why DOT wouldn't approve it, but that's, I think that would be your best avenue to start with.
I really want to see for my two seconds. Two speed zones or two school zones crossing is going to be a pain. And we're going to have to move it down.
Yes, sir.
Or you're going to have a nightmare.
Yes, sir.
I'm taking notes, sir. And they will note it on the federal highway. I mean, they got one on 441 now, right there where the Christian school is. So, right there, that's true.
All right, are there any other questions about that?
With your CTS comment about the sidewalk, there is a program from DOT for your safe routes to school program. And once you identify, then you get into the pool of trying to get those grants for the sidewalks. And it came up every year when I was here before, and they were, there wasn't any that were needed. But now, it's going to need it. West Avenue is going to be one.
We're going to need to do quite a bit of sidewalk work over there for the new school.
Also, is there dates and information for the guardrails going down River Road? Not River Road, what is that?
West Avenue.
West Avenue.
Well, there are going to be guardrails at the entrance and exit of the school, not all the way down.
Not all the way down.
All right, the next thing that we wanted to bring up to go to the group is workforce housing. I don't know if there's any group, if the county, or the city, or if anyone specifically is working on that. I know that when we do exit interviews, when we talk to different people, when we interview teachers, one of the things that keeps coming up is housing. And the median income, and we got this from a report, the EDC did a report, it was kind of like an audit. And it was, I want to say the median income for Glaze County for rental is between $1,500 and $2,100. And for a teacher, that's a lot of money. Per professional, that's just almost, it's impossible. So, I was wondering if there's any entity that is looking at, is there any grants, or is anyone working on anything? Because one of the main purposes for getting all of us together is making, you know, our voice louder. We may be small entities, but together, we can be loud and we can, you know, put our legislative priorities together. And if this is something that the city sees, as well as the county, as well as the school board, then it's something that, when we send people to Tallahassee, and we have a lobbyist, and the city has a lobbyist, and the county, but if we all work together and they keep hearing it, it might finally get through to them. So, can someone from the county and city address that?
Beth, me and you have talked about this before as well. Unless we do it ourselves, you can't have it developed, because then they can rent that to anybody. Unless we do it ourselves, where we say, only a policeman, only a county worker, only a city worker, only a department, only a teacher, because then it's workforce housing for our employees. So, it's got to be something that either the county, the school board, or the city gets the grant to do. It's nothing where we can try to do a study and do this and do this, because if Mark goes out and builds it privately, and, you know, Brad comes in and says, "I want to rent this from you." And, "Well, I just rented it to teachers." Well, he can sue you right then, because it's denied fair housing. So, it's got to be something where it's an employee housing deal. That's the only way it ought to be.
So, is it, so are you all seeing the need as well? Or is it just, I mean, I know Jeff, you and I have, but I mean, is everyone else, I mean, what's everyone else seeing?
It's definitely a great need. It's for our teachers that's come out of my ears, you know, getting housing here in this county.
It's everywhere, it's not just, I mean...
It's nationwide.
Look at the reservation out there. They got, they're looking for places where workers can live right now. And they're driving some highly back and forth, because there's no place to rent here. So, that rural Renaissance bill is supposed to have some affordable housing grants in it. I mean, that's something that we could look forward to. But there was, a couple of groups have come here and they wanted to put low-income housing in here. But we would rather it be affordable housing than low-income. And one of the biggest things that shot, this one company was going to come in and build a thing, but there's no grocery store here. So, where does, if these people don't have the money, how are they going to get anywhere to buy their groceries if there's no grocery store? So, that, they moved, I don't know if they rebuilt it, but they went to Henry County over that issue. But we just need to be careful on what we want affordable housing.
Yeah, and me and Mr. Iger sat on board a while back, the More Haven Board. And one of the thoughts they had, and there were some people that were in that meeting as well, one thought they had was, you have the employee, you give them the reduced rate of the housing. You know, you basically build like a two-two with two masters. So, you put two teachers in there, you give them the reduced rate at it. But you make them do 100 hours of community service outside of the school. If they're a police officer, you make them do 100 hours of community service outside of the police department, or the sheriff's department, something like that.
Why would you do that, Dan?
Why? To get them involved in the community, away from work.
Danny, please, and please introduce yourself, I'll say.
I'm actually a city councilor for Dallas. Former Superdome School in Dallas. So, some of this housing, we've actually talked to districts about the district or county or city building housing and renting it both to, they were paying for it. And then subsidizing teachers or workers or whatever at a lower rate, and like to retain teachers. You might even take part of their savings and put it into a camp they can define as a now, a state with you. Because that's a good initiative for you. So, there's different ways to look at it. And that would require somehow, you know, bonding to do that. And then it would generate revenue that would pay for itself over a period of years. And that's, I mean, we're trying to talk to Wal County, Bay County, every county on the coast. Teachers can't live in those counties and they work there. They're living here, going there, because they can afford to live here. Then you lose them over there, it's a painful thing. It's a vicious cycle of the state. Probably some county workers or whoever else. But we've actually started talking about that kind of hybrid model where you would own it. And whatever, whoever you wanted in there, maybe subsidizing a half of it and have just regular folks. So, we kind of pay for several, a few years. So, that's what the developer does to the same thing. It's y'all become the developer of it, and you would own it. So, you're thinking, "Y'all don't care about that or about this, that's a possibility."
Is that something that your lobbyists took? I mean, we've got the rural Renaissance coming up, and there is housing. I mean, depending on what happens in Tallahassee. But how did you all get started, because you didn't have rural Renaissance?
No, we didn't. And we haven't done this, you see, this is something we're talking to different districts. Because this is a big problem, Gulf County, it's horrible. Gulf County, Franklin County, they're little counties. Millionaires live there, and people can't afford to live there, work there. It's the rural county that can't live there. It's the same thing here. But it's a possibility that you could get together, maybe as a shared thing, put 100 units up in here, subsidize half of it, keep the people there that you know. And the other half out regularly, normal. And it'd be pretty good revenue strength for the body.
But y'all haven't done this yet.
No, we're just talking to you. I mean, counties get desperate and start looking at stuff like this, because there's no, you get like, Wal County pays their teachers $55,000 to start. You can't really single that tree in Wal County for that kind of money. So, they can't live alone. If they live in Wal County with me, and they can work over there. It's just a vicious thing that's going on all over the state. So, it's something that's got to, you know, that's one thing, it's another kind of thing I'm doing, bonding, building that, maintain that, just like there was a school building. And then, it's kind of, these folks help pay for what you subsidize these to do, so.
Well, we kind of had started with the development over here. And it was supposed to be affordable housing. But then whenever all of our teachers got that $4,000 raise that one year, they made too much money to live there.
Well, and now, we always said those rules are selling. That's something, if you're just a teacher, you would get, say, $2,000 a car for the gas mileage. And then, a person's not a teacher for the $2,000. So, it'd be a hybrid, it wouldn't just be just teachers and a door trick. It'd be some everybody. But you'd have it set up where you could subsidize them either to... And we've been talking about that for a year or so. And nobody's pulled the trigger on you, but we're talking about it, so.
We need a developer to come to enforce it.
They can have it too, you know, so.
With that, how about...
Like Jeff said, if you use a developer, then you kind of lose control of who is allowed in and who is allowed out. You can't tell, "Joe, you're off the street, well, you're not a teacher, firefighter, whatever." You can't live here, because now you violated the law. So, you're kind of in a mess there, too.
So, there's kind of three places in North Cheltenham, there are private buildings like that. And they have low, you know, a lower income, not completely low income, a modest income. And what they have there is, I guess, the state or somebody picked up the difference in their rent.
Like section eight house.
Like section eight, that house, same thing that's up there.
And they're really nice. When they were first built. Well, they're still are nice, you're keeping them nice. So, we're going to kind of keep it moving, because we've got a lot to go over. And you all have a lot of topics too. But the next thing I want to bring up was the possibility, I've spoken, we had a couple of board members about the possibility of doing a land swap with the county. We own the property out at Washington Park. And we own quite a bit of property out there. And it's just something that we'd just like you to kind of be thinking about if something was to come up. Now, we're talking about workforce housing. If there's a piece of property that the county owns that you would be interested in doing a swap with us, because you already have the Washington Park Community Center, which is an amazing facility for those residents. But, you know, if the school district owns that property. So, we just want to look, you know, Glaze County is going to grow. And we want to make sure that we are being good stewards of the money, as well as the property that we own and the assets that we have. So, if it's something, we want to bring it to your attention. You know, we don't have an answer, we don't have a specific right now. But it's something that we're asking you to be thinking about when you're going about your meetings. And if it's something that you think, hmm, this is something that the school board might be interested in, and we are interested. We do feel like that we're going to need to build some more schools out in the west side of the county. And we're going to need property to do so. So, it's just something that I wanted to bring to your attention. The next thing is, we have, this past week is really rough, our last couple of days. But we get a lot of calls to hear to the district about the ball fields. And, you know, we want to be good stewards, but we also want to be community legions. And we want to make sure that we're being positive. We want everyone to know that, you know, we want the best for our kids. And they should have the very best facilities. But this past week, we had a breaker trip, or a breaker turned off. Someone busted through the fencing that is where our concession stand was. They turned off our breaker, and it spoiled about $600 to $800 worth of hamburger. And that's a lot of money for a team that's trying to raise money. And we've replaced locks, we've replaced gates. And I know, today I went over and spoke with two of the city workers. You know, they were frustrated. They were over there doing their job, and they were outlining the fields and doing everything. But I guess my question is, you know, whose responsibility, you know, because we want it to look the best it can, you know, where are we? I know the city is, you know, they have put people over there, because I see them over there. We've had complaints about the bathrooms... Um, we've had complaints about the bathrooms being dirty. Um, there's, you know, the, the actual gra, the ground, the grass is not being watered. So can someone address that?
Can I pay this for the city?
Yep, absolutely.
How many uh, panel boxes have we changed at the basketball court?
Probably recently, probably at least five or six.
Okay, so it's not just happening at, at the ball field. There's somebody, vandalism, they, they go up to play whatever they're going up there to play, they can't get the lights on. So that's why you're getting what you're getting. They're breaking the laws. I don't know how many locks we've replaced. I don't know how many times we've had to change the little button to cut down at the basketball court. Because they'll take whatever they can get and break it. So it's not just the ball field. It's a vandalism issue. Also with this statement, what, what you're saying is, there was a set of bleachers broke this weekend. There was a set of, if I'm not mistaken, picnic table was broken this weekend. There was some damage on our side also. So it didn't just happen to school property. And the question I asked our staff today was, did you file a police report? And I'm asking your staff, did you file a police report? Because they don't know where to look and nobody's reporting. Number two, it, we all want it stopped, but when you drive by there, you know, we, we've got a thing at the basketball courts, 10 o'clock, the lights come off. If you go by there at 11:30 and there's somebody out there playing, the law enforcement needs to say, ah, go home. Not blaming the law enforcement, I'd rather throw them, be out there playing basketball than I would, or they could be doing. However, it puts a face that somebody's checking. Somebody's saying, hey, you're not supposed to be here, then you're here. Now, the city does take up a lot of, of the back of responsibility for the ball fields. I don't think it's in our scope to be chalking into the field. I don't think it's in our scope to be dragging the field. But if we do that, that's good. That's good for employees to do that. But it's not our responsibility. It's not our responsibility, every day after a ball game, we have to go clean the bathrooms because kids are flushing toilet paper down to the toilet just to watch it flood.
Shirts.
That, shirts, coats, you name it. That's not necessarily our responsibility. Don't pick on youth ath, youth athletics. They need to do a better job in policing themselves.
So whose respons, whose, so whose responsibility? Is it the counties? Is it the-
Yes, it's, it's, in my understanding, you have to, is to do some of this. I mean, we do our share, by moving, we do our share of, of upkeep of. They're, they gotta take some of this on themselves also.
So who, whose financially, where does the money come from to keep the upkeep of the ball fields?
The city.
The city pays for that?
Correct.
But isn't there a fund, I was, I was told that there was a fund through the county that there was money that was in an account that was um, put aside. There's quite a, a large account with money in it for projects like this?
No.
There is none? There's never been?
No. Well, what would be interesting is, if the city's doing it, but I would just about venture to say forty percent of the kids, maybe less than that, that are on those ball teams live in the city. I would bet you say the rest are out, are out of city members. But yet we, we take that burden.
So I'm in other areas, other counties, small counties, I don't know what you all do, but um, isn't there a recreation department? Is, is there a renovation department at the city? Is there one at the county?
Recreation?
Or any type of a recreation? I mean, well, you have to have a, oh, laughing, y'all have a tourism department, y'all have a tourist, I mean, I'm just trying to, though, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
We have a tourism department because there's some hotels, there's some RV parks and everything else that collect bed tax. And that helps with boat ramp signs and other things. That's why it's a tourism.
I think that's what Dr. Barkfield was referring to, is the bed tax at the county club.
That has nothing to do with-
What can that be used for? Your bed tax?
Very limited. So it's limited to advertising. It's a limited way to promote tourism in the county. And there's a very small portion that'll be used for infrastructure. That's not maintenance for parks and benches and bathrooms. It's to build infrastructure to promote tourism.
So it's, it's called tourism development?
That's right. And it only has those three elements that you can use those funds for.
Okay, so that's not gonna help?
So is, if, if, how can we go together? And I say how can we, because I, the school, I want my kids to have a great, you know, I, I want them to be able to be great ball players because eventually they're gonna be on my, my sports teams at my high school. I mean, I want there to be great facilities and actually they should have that for, our kids should have that. They don't, they don't have a community swim pool. They don't have, the, the ball fields are a lot, what a lot of our kids do have. And they, and I know that um, the people that, that run that organization are, they, they put their heart and soul into it. And they have to fight to get volunteers. So what can we do as a group, as a collective group, the city, the county? It shouldn't be all in the city. I mean, what can we all, there's, everyone in here are members and shakers. I mean, we can do something for our kids.
Have you thought about putting cameras on?
I haven't thought about, but I mean, who's gonna pay for them? Is that something the bed tax could pay?
I don't know. Who owns the park? Who owns it?
The school district owns it, but we have a lease with the city.
A lease. Y'all care a liability. Y'all care a liability too, for this discovery. Um, because wait, let's see, by again, by, you've got one football field, and those, P W and everything else, the ball field, school. And uh, let's see, the city has the field, so it's, 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 but it gets, I see what you just got, right? And like, um, your full season, the school just appeared, the, the, the lives were blessed because for some reason, you're like two or three. But I mean, yeah, that's, so I'm saying, it's, it's, in, in like your baseball little season, that falls under the city's, I mean, that's, so that shall strictly succeed.
We don't have, we don't have a per se rep link to my knowledge, do we? That would be our G C, Bobby.
What gets frustrating for us is, we'll go up there, mind me, and everything, have everything cleaned and good to go. And then Tuesday morning, we get a phone call, the toilets are overflowing. And we send somebody up there, well, somebody flushed the, well, y'all didn't know it last night at 7:30 when y'all got to be playing ball. And I'm not blaming youth athletes, but somebody needs to get them out of there and be responsible enough to go by there at night and say, hey, hold on, before you kids leave, which one of y'all did this? I mean, most of us grew up in Glades County. What would have happened when we were in school? Have we done something like that? Can you see what son of you is? Bobby hair or?
I don't think we can say that on a minute, Tim.
I don't think so either. No, but somebody, somebody needs to be a little bit more aggressive with checking.
Well, I don't have the answers. I just wanted to bring it to the, the groups.
But vandalism is an issue. And if y'all wanna know, vandalism is an issue.
I know if somebody kept right command of my house and my property, I'd probably put a camera.
If we put cameras on-
You notice a little monitor, there's a TV phone or there's a-
We had some kids vandalizing the bathrooms out there in Blackhead Ridge and Archie bought some cheap little cameras and put up there and we filmed every one of them. And um, we, we caught them and um, we couldn't enforce the law, so, so Paul got with the parents and painted up there and paint, repaint the bathrooms. And they paid for the paint and everything and the hours of doing it. But um, and then he had the kids come to the county commission meeting and apologize to the county commissioners for what they did. And so um, I think it was a great, at least the kids don't have a record now, but I don't think the cameras are that expensive. And I mean, they're clear as day when you take it. I mean, there's no way the kids can deny that it wasn't found, but, but um.
That's definitely something we all need to look into, but that says a lot for what we live with now.
Well, and I mean, even vandalism in the schools, when, you know, Blake just graduated last year, he said there was always problems in the bathrooms, there's always, you know, so it's just the society we live.
Well, I just wanna say, when I was in school here, the boys would clog the bathrooms so we could get out of school for half the day. This is not new. Kids have been clogging toilets for 50 years.
I only did it once. That's probably what it is.
You can't complain about an open air field where people access. People access that field all night and all day, all the time. There's no fencing to keep people out. I was the president of E C I A and I had to make those calls because it wasn't us. It was high schoolers coming through after soccer practice. It was middle schoolers coming through after football practice. It's an open air field that anyone thinks that they have access to. And everyone thinks they're allowed to be.
But don't you have a fence?
We do not.
There is a fence.
There is, there is a fence, but the lock doesn't work. So when they lock the fence, they just stop the fence play. They're 25 years younger than everybody, so they don't care.
Have you called Brad or, or Larry and said, hey, we need a lock?
Even when they do though, you just talked about how often you, I'm not the president now, Kansas is. But I think it's a, I'm saying, it's an open field that in our area hasn't been respected nor admired. So people care about it. They, well, your four basketball fields are treated like that because they're not important to them.
Well, and I can tell you today after, um, I had a car full of people and I rode over to the fields, talked with some of the city. And, and, and I want to say the city, I want you all to know that your employees, they were, they were working and they were very, you could tell, they were frustrated with, I think, they were very, they're like, we want the kids to have a really good, I mean, I had a really great conversation with them. But I went over because where the electric, or where the panel is, it's, it's fenced off. And I went and it was locked. I'm like, I looked to the car and I said, oh, it's locked. And I went and put my hand just to like turn around and the whole fence fell in. It, it was, so it's not.
And again, I asked the same question I asked her. Did you call Larry or-
Yeah, I told her, I told the city guys that we're thinking, yeah.
Please don't call, talk to the city guys. Talk to Larry. He can make it happen faster than you can. So that's, but they keep messing with that panel box and we want that foot up cameras. We'll know who did it.
And the problem is though, is that somebody's gonna get hurt if not killed and that's a liability. And even though they're gonna, they're gonna sue you all, they're gonna sue us. And I don't want anyone to get, to die, number one. But I mean, we, we have heard of incidents where people were jumping the fence and going and turning the lights on because their coach told them, hey, run over and turn the lights on. Two of those fields, the lights go to our light, our, our bill. And so we, we keep asking, what is our, our life bill every month for the city? Thinking $1,000. Well, no, I'm not saying every one, every bit of it's over there, but you know, when we're trying to nickel and dime everything and we're looking with a magnifying glass because we, you want fiscal responsibility and you hear it and you hear people say you want, you want everyone to be fiscally responsible? We're looking at everything. So like I said, we're not gonna solve it tonight, but we just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that, look, we, if, we've got to come up with something because these are our kids. And, and we do have a responsibility to give them something, you know, something good and fun and clean and wholesome to do. And playing softball, playing baseball, that's, that's part of, you know, what they can do that's, you know, you don't want them to go to jail. You know, but you don't wanna, you don't wanna, you know, spend the money on the, the front. So um, is there anything else to say for this?
Well, I, I will volunteer to contact Archie. Sounds like he knows what he's doing with that. And I will ask him where he got the cameras and how much they were. So I volunteer on behalf of all of us to contact Archie and see about getting cameras for that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
They're just getting cameras. They're getting cameras.
Okay. Oh, we can find some of those. Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
I have one that is connected to your phone. Yeah, yeah, great. Okay.
So I, I'll check, okay. I wanted to say something. I, I hear that the school district owns the property. That's correct, right? And I hear that the city's doing a lot. Your, your employees are maintaining it. We're talking to you about broken locks and all of that stuff. But I think Clay, you've made a point that probably the majority, at least half of the kids that participate in that do not live in the city, they live in the county. So where does the county come in? I haven't heard anything about what the county is doing for this park. Are they, do they have some responsibility? And if so, what would that be? Is there any funding that they would have to assist with county?
I would ask a question. How much does, does, does the school and the city help pay for all the boat ramps and the bathrooms that get vandalized throughout the county? We don't have a staff that work in the city and everywhere else. I don't have enough people to take care of what I got. But we've got bathrooms all over this county. We've got pavilions all over this county that get vandalized. Where's the city, and it's not just county residents that use them. So pointing that question really is, is saying, well, everybody should do just for this, but we got facilities that everybody uses all over the county. The only people maintaining them is the county.
But if the, if the, if the youth is the future of our county, how can we, how, so you might not be doing it, but what can we do to make that happen? Is it a budget issue? Is it something that we need to advocate?
Should the school board come out and help pay for Lakeport Community Association when they need playgrounds and whatnot? Because it's for the youth that goes to school here.
Okay, but you're, you're, you're totally, you're trying to detour the conversation, Jeff. What I'm saying-
No, we're not doing that.
No, what I'm trying to say to you is that, no, because that's your job as county commissioner. I'm just asking you, the youth is a part of the county, okay? So all I'm saying is, if you're not currently doing it, is it something that we can look into doing? That's all I'm asking you, would you consider? Would you consider if, is there grants out there? Is there, that's all I'm saying to you. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm not saying, you know, we're not asking you to do our job. We're just asking if it's, if it is, it is your community. Those kids are part of your county. Those parents out there, they're taxpayers. So that's all I'm saying.
I, I didn't bring that up to create a problem or to make anybody mad. I just, I feel like those ball fields service the whole county. And maybe we all need to talk about what can be done together. And I think you, right, the county, some of you right away put up your hands and said, not our problem. I, I understand that we don't help with the boat ramps and the Lakeport Community Center. I just ask, is there something that you can do? If you can't, I didn't mean to make anybody mad or, or put you on the defense or anything.
I don't wanna make them mad. That was a bullshit answer. That was a bullshit answer out there. Appreciate that. Thank you. We'll talk about this when I, and this is, that's wrong what you just said.
I can, just from my past experience, I mean, Okeechobee, their ball fields and their high schools are on, on the school boards. They own them. Those are theirs. They're ball fields. I mean, I don't, and when I'm, I grew up in Pompano, all the schools there, the ball fields belong to the school. I mean, the school has, they have a football field, they have, they have everything belong to the school. I don't, you know, I just don't understand. Um, now I can, I can go research for that. Okeechobee does have an Okeechobee County Recreation Department, but I think all them ball fields are on, on county property. So I don't know where.
They're, they're, that's all county property. All the youth baseball fields and football field, that's all county property.
It is.
And they're having county recreation.
The school has their own fields.
Yeah, the school has their own fields and Okeechobee County has their own fields, but they're on county property.
Yes, the youth, youth, youth fields are on county property. Where the sports complex is, just like it has a, a swimming pool right there, the, like the high school pays a portion to utilize that, but that's county property as well.
And from a security standpoint for the school system, I know our schools were, all that stuff's locked down. The community didn't use our baseball fields or softball in Minnesota. But that one municipal stadium that was county reserve, but there is a wrecked center in Bonifat that belongs to the city of Bonifat. It's a lot of food and all that stuff that we haven't had. It's not really the school system. And at one time, the county, the county helps with this one too, because obviously the city's inside the county, so it helps them too. But the, the, the school stuff, it just never get used for anything like that. Because you can't, you can't, maybe, because if you have, you have kids that are using that for the school, you can't have people coming through and it's, it's a security issue.
All right, the final thing that we have is just the list station. And um, I wanna talk to the city about that. Just kind of, um, just looking at, um, you know, talking about where we are with that. And um, I believe we got a, um, order. What's that called? The, the printout we got, the um-
Agenda.
No.
The estimate.
The estimate is a quote.
The quote, thank you. Have a little bit of a, and um, so just wanna kind of hear from you all, um, what you're thinking and the status of the, the list station as is right now and just kind of, uh. Mr. Tipp.
Well, the, uh, the list station that you, right now we have, we have the CCPWA, which is a joint authority between the city and county. Uh, and I know there's, there was some initial discussions about the lift station kind of thing. I think that this item probably needs to be addressed at CCPWA meeting where you have an, an agenda and, and, uh, have it published kind of thing. So we have a meeting coming up on the twenty-eighth, uh, you know, this is probably where that discussion needs to be. Because like I said, you know, uh, I know there's been discussions on funding, on, on that kind of thing, and exactly what, what scope of the project is. So I think that's, and I think the, it's already requested to be on that, that meeting. But actually, I think that's probably where that needs to be discussed because, you know, the, he was, this meeting tonight was noticed. It wasn't noticed for, for CCPWA anymore.
So who is, who is on the CCPA board?
The five, the five county commissioners and the five council members make up that ten person CCPWA.
Mr. Jobs, thank you.
Uh, well, I, I, he's correct. I did request to be on the, uh, agenda for the board. So, um, again, you know, I'm sure you've already seen all my information that I submitted and, and all that. I don't know how you've sent it out to everybody yet or anybody, everybody's had an opportunity to see it.
I, I, I did hear that you turned it, you listed, you, you, you all put together here.
And, you know, they have gotten two quotes, um, that we thought were extremely high. Um, and we are, the, the engineer, Greg, you're a ton of your engineer and myself. Um, we have two more quotes coming from two more, two more construction companies. Um, you know, I'm, I'm doing the high school in Okeechobee County and we built that whole lift station. The manhole, electric, you know, skater, whole nine yards for two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And, you know, our quotes, just to upgrade your lift station were, the, the lowest one we got was four hundred and ten thousand and the highest one was five hundred and fifty thousand. So like I said, both, both your engineer and, and me, we think those are high, you know, not sure why. But we do have two other quotes coming. We don't have them yet. We just requested them a week or so ago. We, uh, this came up. And so like I said, well, it'll definitely be at your meeting.
I think the best thing to do, let's discuss this CCPWA meeting.
Absolutely. And I apologize. I gotta run. I got, I'm on the, I got another, I won't be home till midnight tonight, so.
I just think you'd be better off we discuss that.
And that, that, that works for me because I, like I said, right now I've got, and I'm, I apologize, but you know, I just got double booked tonight.
Oh, you were always everywhere, but I can make a suggestion. You would buy a helicopter. You'd be able to spend a little more time with all of us.
My partner has a helicopter, believe it or not.
Okay, so now we're gonna move right along to the legislative parties for the school board and, I'm Mr. Drake.
Well, do, do we need to be at that meeting? Because that's, I mean, I mean, it's, it's the school board.
I would, I would think so.
We want to try and assist with that, but, I mean.
I, I would say your voice needs to be heard.
Yeah, okay.
You're not gonna be able to vote, but I mean, we need to.
But we would like, we would like to help. I mean, for, I don't.
I want to be, and I ask you for all, all members of the CCPWA, I hope. I don't want to say nothing in here tonight without it being a legal meeting, but I think you, your voice should be heard.
All right, Mr. Drake. So, um, Dr. Barfield asked me to do a legislative update and, um, as you all know, uh, we share, uh, Chris Doolin. He's our shared lobbyist and Chris keeps us on. I don't know, does the city have him? I think just county and school board. Anyway, they'll keep you busy just reading all his emails, but he does a great job for us. And, um, one of the last things I got, so I didn't put down anything from Chris because I know most of you get that. But from our school board association, they, the last email was talking about the time is running short for the senate and the house to get an agreement on their budgets. As you all know, they're apart four billion dollars apart. Um, you know, honestly, I, I want to ask if any of you all know, because I'm a little confused about the movement to, um, the governors talking about reducing property taxes in the state and then the house is talking about reducing sales tax in the state. And I'm like so confused by that. Like, why, why do we want to entice more people to come to Florida? I'm like, and whoever purposely decreases their income budget, like, it doesn't make sense to me. Do, do any, anybody in the room understand why they're doing that?
What I understood on it and what I've studied on it, there's gonna be about forty-three billion dollar shortfall if they decrease property taxes and sales taxes. So one of the, one of the studies that it's shown out is they're going to go to intangible taxes, which is your stocks, your bonds portfolios and stuff like that. It just tax the heck out of it. And then there's also been some talk about state income tax. But I, I don't see either one of them happening. I, I, I don't think.
You don't think that?
I don't, I, I don't think Florida will ever adopt a state income tax.
Oh, yeah, no, because we apparently are trying to roll out the red carpet some more. I mean, why, why are they here? Just the one topic, sales tax. Why do they want to reduce state sales tax and reduce the income for our state budget? I do not understand that. I would not tell my husband, hey, let's quit working and cut our income so that we can not do anything. You know what I mean? Like, so that we don't have money for groceries. That's what they're doing. They're purposely cutting the income for the state of Florida. Why?
They're trying to.
Help me. Talk to them.
Well, they're claiming they have a big surplus of money, but if they would look at the roadways around here, there are plenty of places to spend that surplus. Highway sixty, highway seventy, all of them, before lane. If they want to take some surpluses and get rid of, fix the roads, but they keep inviting everybody to the state of Florida, but they don't want to improve the ways to get around. So it's like highway seventy-eight, it's gonna have to be widened sooner or later. You know, but, but yeah, I, I agree with you. Why would you cut taxes when we're so far behind in roads? Does this make sense?
You can't even get highway seventy-eight right and it's only two lanes.
I mean, I just, I just.
I wish today they tried a four.
I just didn't understand that.
Drive the road to Okeechobee twice, twice a day.
So the other, the other side of that coin is when they cut the, say, the sales tax, that cuts back on our revenue shares.
Right.
So it doesn't just cut back on the state budget. That cuts back on the money that we get.
Exactly.
One of the conversations that I had in Tallahassee too, and they're talking about taking the, 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 the lotage increases from the electric car vehicles, which was designated to fund roadway improvements, just like your gas tax. They're talking about allocating that money not to roadways, but to other priorities. And I was talking to a lobbyist today and they're talking, the TDC money that you were talking about. There's a bill coming out that they may allow, require that you use your TDC money to offset your budget costs to your, to the reduc, because of the reductions. But as Commissioner Patterson said, just the increase in the homestead exemption alone is gonna have a huge impact on us. And so we, to me, it's an election, it's an election ploy. But the thing is, is you tell anybody to cut back your taxes, they'll want to vote for it, not understanding that we can't get teachers, we can't get firemen, we can't get people, because we don't have the funds to pay them. And so we don't get enough TDC money to offset those costs if that happens. So it is a, it is a thousand, it's one of the thousand cuts they're using to, um, just basically gut through accounting.
Yeah.
And, and when you take, I believe the number right now is, um, we have one point two six billion dollars in taxable land in Lakes County right now. I think that's the number, it's one point two six million. But you take a lot of the, you take a lot of the homes and you do a hundred thousand dollar homestead exemption, that wipes. Clay, what would you take? Probably sixty percent of, of our tax roll just in the city? Just in the city. And we're not aiming for the rest of them.
Take the rest of it as egg.
Well, I'm, no, I'm not just talking about egg, but like out of, out of Jared and your house or out where you live, that's probably, you know, where, where a guy's got a quarter acre of lot and a twenty-five year old double, it's just gonna wipe that completely off tax roll. Now, you're still running by that because your house is on the water and everything else CBS has. But a lot of these smaller places and, and the places on Loop Road and things like that are just gonna be completely wiped off. And the only way you're gonna get anything out of them is with an MTSU, MSBU or an assessment.
Well, if I may, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir.
You, the, the fact is, is the state legislature removed our ability to put MSTUs or MSBU's on ag land. They just passed another, uh, where you can't do special assessments on ag land. So even your water improvement districts, your two ninety-eight, one ninety-eight districts, their, their job is to provide drainage for agriculture. Can't put special assessments on agricultural land. They're, they're taking away our ability. I'm, I don't know what the reasoning is, but, you know, I, when I go up there and talk, it's, it's like I'm talking to a wall.
And if I may add to that, Mr. Carlisle, a lot of this water management district land that we're taking out outside of camp, town here, uh.
The Dickbidge project?
The old, yeah, the old Berry's project, the old Berry land, all of that's in lieu of taxes. So you may get taxed and you may not. So you're losing tax on it.
Half our county's, half our county's land is in that right now.
Yeah, so there's not a whole lot of money here.
And you lose the ability, you lose, you lose the forever ability to develop any of that land to be self-sufficient.
That's correct.
All right. Well, I think they're, I think they've lost their mind up there as well. I just can't imagine why they are thinking to reduce their income because we could help them come up with what to do with the surplus. They keep cutting us everywhere. So I, it just doesn't even make sense to me. Um, the only thing that, that I, other thing I want to mention was the term limits because I know that affects county commission as well as school board. School board already, you know, they passed the law. We're already term limited. Um, you know, I'm not real sure why they want to put that on the constitution, but they were gonna put the county commission on the constitution. But, um, what we're hearing is, um, the senate has only heard that in one committee. So the house has passed that, but have you all heard as the city, uh, the senate, I mean, gonna go ahead and pass that, you think? Have y'all known? Heard anything?
I've only heard it's been to, it's only passed one, but I don't think it's moved on.
Yeah. And we're almost to the end. So that makes me think it's not gonna make it. So that's what I'm hoping. Um, and I did want to mention the role Renaissance, um, provision. There are lots of grant opportunities in there for city and counties. And, you know, we have a great grant writer here at the school district that if we can help you guys with that, when that comes out and if we qualify, I think we're going to. And I do want to give a shout out to Rosemary with the EDC because, um, in the first, uh, draft of that, they actually listed counties and Glades County was not listed. It said that these counties lost population in the last census. And so Rosemary and I were talking and she said, well, you know, Glades County wasn't listed, blah, blah. So I did speak with, um, Senator Albrecht about that and, well, his aide. Um, and he said, and the next time I saw it, they have revised that. And now they're gonna have counties apply or they will name the counties later. So I thought that was good news for Glades County and I, I think that was Rosemary's keen eye that caught that to their attention. But anyway, uh, Rosemary, um, I did, I just wanted to say that hopefully that those grant opportunities will pass and we are here to help write some of those grants if you need our help. And another thing that we taught, the last thing I want to say is, um, there is a bill, um, Mr. Thomas, about, um, students walking parallel to highways. And so if our kids come walk parallel to twenty-seven, that new bill that's been going through the process right now might help us to, if, if they walk down before they cross it over. Um, I don't know a lot of details about that, but I did see that. Um, last, when we had our legislative delegation hearing, the last one, um, I handed a sheet of paper to Representative Tuck and Senator Groll. You know, it was our Glades County School District platform. It was one page. This wasn't it. Um, and then, and, and what, actually Kim and I have talked about, it would be really great if we got together and did a Glades County platform like this, and I just left blanks for you all, um, every year so that when you all go, you handle the Glades County and it's got city, school and county needs. And I just like shortened ours up because ours took the whole page, right? And I just think that that's an area where we could get more bang for our buck if we would, like, if we know what you're asking for. Um, because honestly, we don't really stay that in touch with you all to say, how can we help you, you know? Um, I think that would be beneficial to all of us. So, um, just an idea to throw out that. I would, I mean, this year I created one for us and maybe I'll just next year try to get Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Tips and come up with a few, just two or three bullet points and then we can all take them to Tallahassee and maybe have a bigger impact. And then we can speak for you and you can speak for us. Because for example, we asked to waive the, um, repayment of the special facilities fund, so for the school. Um, and see, that's something they can do with that surplus. Like, like we asked, can you waive the payback fee, which for us was five and a half million dollars? Well, they're not gonna waive it for us because we're already in the project. They are telling us that they will extend it. We don't have to pay it back as, in three years like we originally had to. They're gonna extend it as long as we need, which will help. But if they've got extra money, just tell us we don't have to pay it back. You know what I mean? Like, so that's why I don't understand. I don't know what to do in the surplus. So anyway. Anyway, that's just my thing. Uh, we're always trying to get stuff to do with graduation testing and things like that that really don't, you know, affect the rest of us. But some things do and I think we should work together on those things. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right. Does anyone have any questions concerning anything the school board presented? All right, I'm gonna hand it over to the county.
Well, I would, but I would agree with Crystal with that platform because when we go to Tallahassee, a lot of times we just don't go see our two representatives. We see four or five different ones or six, whatever in there and that, and I'm sure you guys see. So we can't see all of them, but combined you might see four that I don't, we might see four that you don't and they all get the message. So, but, um, as far as the county goes, I'm gonna let Mr. Carlisle update. It seems like he's on top of everything.
So a couple of things that are, uh, that are huge in the county is Lake, uh, the Lakefront Development's got their development order. They just put in for, I think it was twenty-nine homes to be developed, to be built up there. So we're working with them on getting that project moving forward. They're gonna be putting in for six commercial units, grocery store, um, a school and a couple other commercial sites up there on that property. So that, that's gonna be a good tax base for the county.
Where is that?
Lakefront, Buckhead Ridge.
Buckhead Ridge.
Buckhead Ridge.
Yes, uh, um, it's right next to, right next to Buckhead Ridge, just, just to the west, just, if it actually butts up to that. So that project's moving forward finally. And I've had several meetings with Lake, uh, Big Lake Project and they're moving forward. They're going through their, their approvals. So they're, they said whether they have sewer with the seven old tribe or not, if they have to put in a plant, they're willing to do it. The reason that one is so significant is because of their proposal to put in a hospital and a medical facility and homes that'll be more affordable. They're, they're wanting to provide homes for the tribe as Commissioner Stanley talked about. They need, they're, they're looking for places. They're talking about putting a hotel. There's also talk about, I don't know what it is yet because I haven't had a chance to review it, a drive-in restaurant, uh, drive-through restaurant on, on seventy-eight and that's a different developer. Uh, so those are two of the big projects. I can tell you whether it happens or not, I've had, I can't disclose what it is, but I have two or three huge people who want to build manufacturing, high jobs, high number of jobs in the county in different areas. And I am meeting with Dunkin' Donuts tomorrow. So they're looking to come to, come into the county. But, uh, there's some, there, we've, we've got, we perk the interest of people. And so I, I know Larry will talk about the one in the city, but it's, it's a, it's an exciting time. I've been meeting a lot of people about what's going on on the county. Seventy-four is gonna, highway seventy-four, as we all know, is, is, has been a disaster for a long, long time. It was actually a project that when I left, it was, right where I left it. But we're moving that project forward. I've met with the engineers and I've met with the contractors and did some redesign of their construction plan so that it's gonna be a much better project and hopefully we can get more done than what they originally intended. Seven twenty-one starts, the start date of that is May nineteenth. That's the remainder from the tribe up to, uh, the county line where they stopped off. That's the remainder from the tribe up to the county line where they stopped off. And so that project is, we've had our kickoff meeting and that one's going to start. And it's 135 days, so that one should be done by October. 74 segment is supposed to be done by January, I believe it was. So those two projects, we've got them back on track six years later. But those are going to be some key points. And we've met with, I guess the big one is, we met with DOT and I met with the transportation and the, and the governor's cabinet, Brian, about turning 74 over to the state. And we've got some pretty good feedback. I've met with Collier County. They're on board with politicking the DOT to put it back into a state road so that we don't have to spend the $20 million to fix it, which they could use their surplus money for.
You can make a list, all they can do is.
I mean, I'll be candid, when we met with, with Purdue, whether it happens or not, I felt really good about it. Commissioner Stanley was there, Commissioner Barnes and Patterson were there. And they, Purdue, Secretary Purdue basically told Al Kays, admin person, you're going to negotiate in good faith of turning this back over to the state, right? That was his comment directly. Brian from the transportation and the governors, he, he didn't see any reason why it shouldn't go back to the state. And so that's important because if we can get them to take it over as is, unless the working ground already got funded from them. And I'll give you, I'll give you, Purdue's comments is, well, if we have to give you $20 million to fix it to bring it up to, up to our standards and then take it over, why don't we just spend the $20 million? So that was, the conversation I thought was very positive on getting that turned back over. The next one's going to be trying to turn 721 back over to the state because we feel that's nothing but a cut through road as well. Broadband and muse, we're working on a tower out there, broadband out there. Know that the city's working on some stuff to get broadband or get some usable internet in the city. So, but it's, there's a lot going on and just happy to be a part of it.
Anyone have any questions?
Do you want me to touch on the legislative stuff? Come here.
Sure.
So several of the items, what did we talk to the legislator about and those are either where the delegation was. The sewer plant upgrade to the, to the sewer plant. We did get 5.2 because it was a, Larry, we got from DEP on that grant. We had 3.3 in the legislation in the house, but nothing in the senate. Still a possibility that can get funded out of reconciliation. I'm not real sure that'll happen. But at least we got 5.2 to start working on getting that third train in. We asked for some money for a sewer study to serve that northeast side by Buckhead to try to work on putting the sewer plant up there so that we can address the development that's evidently going to come up there. We didn't get that money, but I had a really good meeting with water management about maybe getting some of that land that they took off the tax roll and putting a sewer plant there and they were really, it was, it was a good meeting. I'm going to, I will say that Drew was very positive about wanting to work that out and for us to be able to put a sewer plant up there. Whether it comes to fruition or not, but I think I've made some, we have made some pretty good headway on that. The other one was to do the fire station in Buckhead Ridge, the expansion of that. We need to get funded for that. But I did meet with the developer in Lakefront and they're abieable to building a fire station within that development, expanding their ambulance and allowing us to put our fire trucks in there. So I'm working on getting them to fund that and that would be a benefit for us. And then, what was the other one with the sewer?
Washington Park.
Washington Park. I had put in, I'd also put in for, I was trying to put in for a grant from the CDBG, but we just didn't have time. But the Washington Park project, it did not get funded to finish the sewer in Washington Park. But we've been fighting tooth and nail trying to get that done. I know Connie has put it into the feds, to try to get the federal budget on board, but we'll want to see where that goes. The last one is, and it's going to hit all of us, is if this sovereign immunity bill goes through, House Bill 301, keeps it at 200, 300, then it goes to 600 and a million in 2030, it goes, it could be a million to 3 million. And so.
61.
61. And so it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge for all of us, for anybody that has a governmental entity. If those sovereign immunity charges go up, it's going to cost us in our insurance rates. And it's also going to cost us in frivolous lawsuits. I talked to Groll extensively about it. I said, this is going to create, and she's a lawyer, so she understands. And I said, it's going to be a problem. And last year I used the defund, I was with the city and we had our police department. I said, you're basically defund the police with this bill. And she looked at me like I was crazy. She said, well, my biggest liability is if I have a bad shoot. So I might as well get rid of my police department because I don't, I can't afford it. If I have a bad shoot, then I bankrupt me. They don't want to do claims bills and that's why it's coming up. But, so I don't think we're going to win this for that. It's, it's not gone too far in the senate yet, but the house passed it. So it's, it's 1570 is the senate bill, 301 is the house bill. So if you have any lobbyists that want to help fight that, and all of us should be concerned about this one.
Please send letters.
Please send letters.
What about, what about the single member district? I know that's not state politics, but local, I know it kind of would affect everyone in this room as well. Is that something that?
It didn't go anywhere from what I understand. So there's two comments, one, single member districts versus single district voting. And that's what they were looking at because we all have districts, county commission all has a district, you have to live in a district. What they wanted to try to do, Lee County was trying to do it too, is they were trying to go to a single district voting, which it's, it would be a challenge for Glades County because you, you, I, I agree, you serve the whole county. So what should the whole county have to say? That's my opinion. But it, it's difficult if, if it became Morehaven only voted for that district. You have, you end up with, I've seen it happen, I don't know how to say it, but you end up with, well, all the money's going in your district. All the money's going in your district because you have more pull and that, I've, I've seen it happen. A lot of its accusations, that's where the need was. But why put yourself in a position where you, people feel like they're plotting against each other? I think it's, but I don't like it for, for this county. But that's y'all's decision. I'm just.
Well, and I'll tell you that we did have, we did vote on that probably nine months ago. Tony Witten brought it up and we had so many people calling us, telling us that they wanted to vote for every commissioner and I was taking their vote away. So it failed. But, I don't know, there's a lot of other commissioners going around there. But like I said, I didn't know that the one from the state had failed, but that, they were, the state was trying to do that on their own too. So that would be that way, but.
That, I guess was my question because I didn't know how, I knew at the county level, there was some conversations being held about it. And I was just trying to see if what happened at the state was going to filter down because if y'all were going to single districts, then what would that look like for my board as well?
And I, I think Mr. Carlisle said it, it started out in Lee County to something to do around Dunbar. If I remember right, the representative for that Dunbar is. And it was just right on the line and so that's where it all started from, if I remember correctly.
Well, basically, what I had read, like the guy that represents his district for Lee County, he never wins his district, but he wins the county. So everybody in his district, they don't want him in there, but he wins anyway. So that's why they were trying to get that done. But it, but it would, it would, and just my personal theory is saying, saying, I only had to worry about Buckhead Ridge. Why would I worry about going everywhere else in the county anymore? Because all I got to do is win over these people in this one little district and as long as I got that, why do I care? But when you're, everybody's voting for you, you got to care for everybody just like you care for the same one that you live in in. So I think it would change a lot of attitudes on, on commissioners or school board members or whatever if, if you only were voted by the people in your neighborhood, you know?
And I think it goes back, and you've heard me say this before, I think this has kind of been my tagline is, you know, we're not politicians, we're public servants. And a lot of times we've had to place ourselves in that political arena. And you know, there's just so much going on and our hearts are truly servant hearts and we want to do what's best for our constituents. But sometimes you just don't know which way, you know, that you want to go. You've got to keep up on all these laws and what's going, what couldn't happen, but at the same time, you know, continue, like for us, it's making sure that, you know, we continue with our daily task of educating. So is there anything else you have?
Now, we did get awarded for some expansion. Where was that? More Haven to put the sewer in?
Bound the state.
Bound the state. So we did, we get that, we did get that money too.
No, that was 3.3 million.
Where is it for? Out of where?
Bound the state.
Oh, okay.
Yes, subject to sewer.
Across the river.
So I had a question, Mr. Carlisle or whoever can answer. The firefighter training, I heard that you had some people that were in training now because, and that the volunteer fire department was going to be able to come back because they were getting lovely training. I've always felt like this school, that we should help provide the training for that firefighter one, like in our career department or something. Like, I'm curious, like who's teaching it and how long is the course and is that something we can help with? Because to be a volunteer, you got to have that one certification, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's an online course.
Oh, okay.
For the most part, you have to do the, the field stuff with the hoses and the gear at the, at the fire station or the UOC. They do it out of there, but the majority of the course is online. And I think we have somebody here that's actually going through it, but we've got about 15 that are going through it. But you can, Commissioner, if you want to give your experience on the program.
I've got eight that work, that wish work if you're going through it. One they told me is mostly online and then they got somebody out of Holland coming, that'll be coming in or either we go to them or they come to us.
So I assume you got to be 18 or is that right?
15 works too.
Okay, a minimum.
Doesn't work hard as good though, does it?
I don't think that volunteer that's 84.
Wow. I just wonder, could our kids do the online certification as seniors, right? And then when they turn 18, some of them turn that before they graduate. I'm sorry?
I think there's a couple of deputies that are also doing it. So I wouldn't see why not.
One of the things that we get at CTE courses, we get points for our high school, for our school grade. That, I don't know if that's what you're asking, but it's something that if it's something that we could, we could tap into that and we could try to work together and see if we could make it a stronger program. I think is what she's.
Beth, with your hoses, they got to be 18 before they get pin.
Till they take their, and they can, they have to take their tests, they have to be 18.
They can still do everything here, but they have to.
Correct. Actually, we have students that are waiting and as soon as they, the day of their birthday, they come and they fingerprint.
So we might could do this the same way. And who's paying for the course and is it expensive or?
No idea.
It's about $250, I think, for the course.
And the county pays it or the person, county's paying it?
I believe so.
Yeah, they, they haven't really discussed that yet. We, I got a lot of physical stuff. I just paid for them to our company.
They charged their credit cards, you just don't have.
No, I use the wet works. So, but we had a employee doing it. So I just had, we did a, but as far as the course, I'm not sure.
And what's that certification called? Because we need to look on our list of firefighter one. Firefighter one, okay.
There's all different grades that you can get, but to basically, if you get, if you get certified to be a volunteer fire department, you ain't got to do much more and you can be a paid fireman. So it's, it's like, that's why a lot of them won't do it because, and the ones that do it end up, they want to get a job and say, why, why wouldn't I be a volunteer? Because now I can do this. But the county, I mean, we would love to have more volunteers than where we possibly can. We've got one guy up there in Buckhead Ridge, still been there, he's a young guy. Hannah? Eddie. So Eddie was up there, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago. We were in Tallahassee, but he goes and crats the trucks up and washes them and make sure the pumps and everything work. Well, fires started at Willis Berg's house, the shed right next. And if Eddie had a bed in there, Willis's house would have burned down because Eddie got rid of the truck and watered Willis's house down before El Macho B could get there. But so, you know, even though it's only one man there, but he did save Willis's house. But we need, we used to have a good volunteer fire department crew up there, but like I say, a lot of them got too old, they can't, can't do it. And the young, the kids, I don't know, they just don't have the interest in it.
Do they get, because I know in certain areas, I know in Collier County, the volunteer firefighters, if they go on a call, they get paid by a very minimal, like maybe $20 a, is that something that they do here in Glades County?
And we've been preached that. I don't know what we're paying them now, but it's, I mean, I was on volunteer fire department for a long time. We got $5, we got $7, two went to fire department, we got $5. But they all ended up donating it back, but I think they're getting $25 a call now, but.
And you get some meeting money too, don't you?
Yeah.
They attend the meeting and I, I don't know, if you're the chief, I think you get another so much a month to be the chief. But, but it's really, I don't think it's, the money's good for them, but I think you got to have the heart that you want to do it. Otherwise, you know, it's just not.
So there's three certificates. You got a volunteer certificate, firefighter certificate of completion and certificate of compliance. When you get certificate of completion, you're a firefighter one. When you get the certificate of compliance, you're firefighter two. But the thing is, if you get a volunteer firefighter certificate, which is in the Florida statute, you can work for a year, but you have to get that firefighter one or they can't keep working you on fire.
So it's the first step to become one. So it would be a great thing for a young person.
If they're looking to.
If you wanted to become a firefighter.
Now, if they're just trying to be a volunteer, a volunteer certificate is fine, but if they're trying to make a career out of it, I'd say go ahead and get that firefighter one.
And I, and I too believe that, like when I was a volunteer up there, you didn't have to have nothing. You just had to show up and they told you how to do it. That's, that's the way it was. But so I think our paid firemen, not, not our county, but I think the bigger counties have pushed these rules to make them certified, trying to save their job, make them pay jobs instead of, you know, volunteer jobs. And I, and I really think that's what pushed it over the limit, but.
Firefighters union, right?
Yeah. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure they didn't appreciate it when I got 10 people up there putting out fire and they ain't got paid nothing and they're trying to get more money for them, you know, but I mean, that's just my theory.
We used to have a very good situation here in Glades County when they formed the Fire Chiefs Association. And then they got things done and there was a thriving, there was a thriving fire department in every community. And even the communities that were highly retiree, Ortona had a very good fire department. And, and that's to say that all 20 or 30 people that were actively involved were not retirees and they supported. But when that, all these rules came into effect and getting these certifications, people weren't interested in being, in achieving a career in fire. They were interested in being part of helping the community and they just felt like they couldn't help anymore. And that's, that's sad. And that's one of the things I learned when I went around campaigning, what happened to all our volunteer fire departments.
Clay, you remember when, when Sandy used to do the first responders deal for us? You know, that's why we were trying to get that barbecue truck off coming back and get more community stuff going. And when she had that, that was huge. And, and you had, you had different volunteer from all around the county and even Hendrick County, some of them guys would come over and all that. I mean, it was a great thing.
No, I'm like, yeah, Russell, I mean, we had volunteer fire departments. It just seemed like a community's had, every, every community, whether it was Buckhead, Lakeport, Morehaven.
Well, it was the center of the community.
Yeah. And we'd have a talking booth and everybody would be there. Remember we used to have at the Fourth of July, the battle ball kind of. And it was, it was something to be proud of in the community. And unfortunately, the state, and I can speak for myself, that's the reason I said, I'm done. Because I, I'm not going to work all day and then kind of sit through a, the equivalent of just about me was an AA degree.
And people didn't realize it also affected the forestry department.
Yeah.
Because when the forestry had a fire, and, and you know, what, 60% of our county is a bunch of forest, right in the middle. Glades County would show up. We weren't asked to. We'd see the fire and we would go. And I would venture to say Lakeport did too in other areas.
I fought more forest fires than. And then I did housing.
Yeah. Before the age of 25, I had to.
Yeah. I mean, that was just what we did. We were pretty good at it. We only lost 100 acres one year.
Never foundationally.
Our home was the first to burn in Ortona after we got a fire department. But the great thing was it was the first home saved after we got the fire department.
So how many hours is that course that you're taking? You have, yeah.
Two sixty.
Two hundred and sixty hours online. Yeah, that's a big commitment.
Yeah, where are you gonna find three people in Ortona to do that?
Yeah.
Certainly what?
Like, do the Ortona volunteer and they came out with this, you have to have this.
Right.
That's, it's changed. I think when I was doing it, it was two, one eighty.
Yeah, it went up.
And then it went up, yeah.
It used to be one eighty until about ten years ago, eight years ago.
Yeah.
All righty. So.
That's right.
Is there anything else that you have?
Nothing that you wanna hear about.
All righty, so the city of More Haven.
Well, I'm gonna defer to the smartest man in the city.
The, uh, I don't know if anybody remembers, but after last year's legislative session, the governor vetoed most of the water wastewater projects. And directed that F T, F D E P set up a portal and you had to fly through there for your project. So F T P could evaluate it. Uh, that, uh, that grant portal closed July thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. And then, uh, then on March twenty-fifth, uh, the governor had a press conference up in Palm Bay. And they ordered three hundred eighty-nine billions to different wastewater treatment, uh, projects throughout, throughout the state. Which, and one of ours was the, uh, our wastewater treatment plan in Boundance State. But, uh, the, the water programs did, did fair, fair as well. I look like all the, everything worth is related to wastewater or, uh, or reclaimed, uh, water, uh, projects, things like that. You know, even though the, the name of the product, the portal was the Water Quality Enhancement Portal. But, uh, but we did, we had submitted, the city had submitted our, our typical, uh, uh, water projects. One is the, uh, we requested five point four million for the water treatment plant expansion. And then that would add about five hundred thousand, uh, gallons per day, uh, to, to the water plant, water treatment plant capacity. And also would, uh, put in a second train. Right now we have, there's only one train in that water treatment plant. So if it goes, you know, there's issues if that goes down, so then, then, then you don't see. But then we, we try to get that project about, uh, come in about, I know since I met us, but about three years now. And we haven't been successful in it. Another project that we always submit for is trying to get smart meet smart meter, water electric meters. We, we, we then requested about three billion to analyze for that. And it has not, has not got funded yet. And, uh, are extending the Marina Seawall. But we, uh, we've, we've got a project and to extend the Marina Seawall out to about five hundred feet in the Fosa Hachi. It, it's a shelter rated project. We have the design and we have the Army Corps of Engineer permit. We have, like I said, haven't been able to get that project funded. We've turned it, we, we all, all three of these projects are back in the legislative session. And I think we've heard so far is that the water treatment plant expansion has been listed on the web, the house site for two point seven million. But obviously there's still a long way to go in that process. But like I said, those are the, uh, like I said, the, looks like wastewater, I don't think it plays around. So, but we could, we're continuing to push the water treatment, the water treatment side also. Uh, we, we mentioned new, new stuff going on. The, uh, in the Marina, a developer has purchased an eight point seven acre parcel. How did it begin Marina? And, uh, are, are gonna push forward with, with developing that. They've talked about recreational uses. They've talked about some residential, uh, some commercial in there, uh, possibly hotel, the type of things, uh, smaller type hotels. But, uh.
Is that the, um, I'm sorry, let me interrupt, but, um, is that the, the gentleman that came and he had like the, um, they're like small, they're not like houses. He was gonna, he said he was working with the city, um. They're kind of, they're kind of like tiny houses, but they're, they're more.
No, that's, that's not the.
Okay, something different?
Yeah.
And you're talking about the Marina under the bridge?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
The water between the Marina and the river trap.
Okay.
That, that is an eight, eight point seven acre parcel. Well, they're, like I said, they're, uh, they're a national group. Like I said, they have purchased the property. We've sat down with them and, uh, basically a while ago, the, the council, uh, they enacted new, uh, zoning, zoning standards for the Marina area, about more density, more height. So like I said, we're probably gonna make their, their, talking about proposing, it will be, it will be allowed to go in there. So like I said, we have it boarding now on a, uh, the, at least a preliminary site plan.
Are they out of Naples? Is that, is that who you're working with or no?
No, they're, they're, uh, it's the Granger Group. They're, the company's originally out of Michigan. But the, but the, the owner lives in the, on Book Key. Uh, they, they're doing projects in Closeton now. They've done some in Fort Myers, but they're, like I said, they're, uh.
I think this is the same group. They came and met with us about possibility of, um, they were, they said they were working with the city, but they didn't tell us, they didn't go into detail. They was just talking about the possibility of having some of our students, some of the trades. But, um, and I, and it's not modular homes, but it was a certain type of home. And he was talking about they worked with the Granger Group, so I don't.
But so they're, they do a lot of.
Pause.
On the suit.
Yeah. They, you know, I know they do a lot of projects everywhere. So like I said, and I, my last discussion with them, I'm sure they're out looking now for investors. So we'll get something moving with, uh, with that project. Cause like I said, it will be, you know, what's our, at least, uh, some of the, some of the, what I've seen to me so far, it looks pretty good. So we'll see what, you know, I don't know about that. And then, uh, about three years ago, we, we submitted for a, uh, for, for road resurfacing for, for some streets around the school. Uh, it, the, it's the Scott, the Small County Outreach Program, the Mid-Small Road Resurfacing Program. Uh, Avenue K between Eighth and Ninth, uh, Eighth Street between Avenue J and Avenue M. And, uh, Avenue M between, uh, Fifth and Eighth Street. Those are three small resurfacing projects. Really, it's in the design phase now, so hopefully we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get that going sometime. Well, obviously we'll have, we'll coordinate the school to do it sometime when, when you're not in session. But, but repainting those are short projects, so they're not, they're not extensive, but, so for that, that, I'm gonna get one course. Since we submitted for that project about three years ago, the cost will probably triple. So, but that, that's kind of what we, you know, have right now. So we're, we're trying to, uh, you know, in addition to the downtown project we tried to finish, we're also trying to get funding to move on up Riverside. Take it out further and see if that's, you know, for the session or not.
Um, the county had mentioned that they're working with the Haddonites. Is that something that the county and the city work on together? Or is that just the?
Yeah, they, they come there.
I don't know. I assume they're probably trying to go up into the business park or.
She don't need to know.
Yeah, they're looking at, they're looking at that. So, I make sure they don't, they don't bother you. They, they wanna go, I mean, I don't know. We'll see. It's just, it's, it's just a, get to know it, but it's been mentioned in the public. So it's not something that's not known. But it's, I'm always gonna meet with them and talk with them.
Yeah, I've been hearing about that one for a while. I've been, I've been like, yeah, like where at? Friends. What about the Marina? Is anybody in the Marina now or?
No.
So you're just looking for someone to lease it or?
The city's property in Marina? You're talking about the city lot that's in Marina?
The blue gets so choose some. Yeah, I'm talking about running the Marina.
That's, that's, that topic is coming up soon to discuss what, what they.
We've kicked ideas around, but we haven't never really. So the person that ran it before just leased it or something from the city?
That is real limited lease. I think what we've, what we've been discussing is probably something on a little wider scale where, you don't have someone to maybe come in and develop that lease back to them or some kind of reason.
So this new, this new thing you were talking about with the six acres, would that include the Marina or not? Be on the other side of the canal there?
That's a debris, but they, this, they actually purchased that property.
Between the water and river trap.
Not the Marina. Marina's so long and young.
How much of the, how much of the, um, the front, river front runages rather than, and Sunny Hall where boats can dock up? How much of that is the city?
All of it.
No, no, not all of it.
Now, in front of that old, uh, hotel.
Hotel, they have their own dock too.
So how many boat slips does they have?
How many boats is?
Well, I don't know. I'm just saying, cause my question is, we, we were, we were on the river the other day. And someone was talking about what a great opportunity for a business to go in there. And they were talking about how nice it is and what they pay at other boat docks and boat slips. And they were just talking about it. So.
Well, that hotel's for sale.
That's one hundred percent.
Yeah, we, we just recently raised the rates.
There's the answer of our house. We buy the old hotel, we rent out the apartment.
There you go.
You know, city, county, school goes together with all our extra money.
It's all mission verdicts of apartments. So, but we will probably always keep the dock.
That's right.
Great budget.
Does anyone else have anything? So next on the agenda is citizen comments. Are any citizens that would like to say something?
I would. I'd like to address a couple of things. I'd like to address Mr. Rollman's, uh, comment earlier. My lot of town does not help with the upkeep and the maintenance of the ball fields. When the city ended up with the leased property from the school board to take that section of ball fields, it was written in the agreement that the county would maintain the Chalannicka grounds as far as the upkeep and the mowing on that. Just the property, not the building or the structures or the fence, just the upkeep of the grass. And it also says in that contract that if G C Y A A or whoever is running youth sports needs something, the city is the first outreach as far as the maintenance on the building. But the county would be liable for any monetary value of, if they needed a thousand dollars, it was up to them to go and ask the county. But they've never, I don't believe the county's ever been approached. But that's how it's written in the agreement.
What agreement is that? I've never seen that.
I just recently got to read all of them. So, uh.
Is that the N O U?
It's on the, it's on the lease agreement from when the jail, from when the jail was built, Chalannicka grounds left, the water tower and all of that land swaps up to a place. And that's, that's why the county is not responsible for it. They're responsible for taking care of the Chalannicka grounds.
I understand that they're not responsible, but I was just wondering, I think we were all asking.
Yeah.
Is there something that the county can do to get a grant or something for athletics that could help? Yeah.
But that's what, you know, that's why the county is not very.
Cause the county's never, they've never approached and asked.
I wanted to address was to have his comment when it was about the hundred hours community service. When that was explained, the number hundred hours was just thrown out there. And the reason that the community service was there was to not only, to leave, when you leave school, leave your job, you don't go home and sit in the apartment that we're subsidizing for you. You're responsible for going out and coaching a ball team to try and get integrated into the community. So eventually you would leave that apartment and buy an empty lot and establish your own home there.
Yeah, we're subsidizing. I understand that, but that's why I asked him why.
That, that's, I, I think the, when the, when the presentation was given, community service was, it sounds like a jail community sentence. But, but that's what they meant was to help you, since you're getting a break on your living quarters, you got to give it back to the community. And hopefully in the long run, you're giving back to the community. Now you're involved in more than just teaching school or working at Sheriff's Department and you're starting your own family purchase a lot.
Jake, you said that you've recently seen the M O U, um, or the paperwork that, that you just discussed. Is there a way that we can see that as well? Cause are you talking about the county and the county and the ball fields? Or the M O U that the, the county, the school district has with the ball fields?
When, when the school district made their agreement with the city to lease the property, we're on the same page, right? That's what you're asking me? The county's responsibility, when the ball fields left from up there, the county's responsibility was only monetary. It wasn't on a daily basis. It was that if the city fell short, uh, we needed to reseed the fields or we needed to build a new concession stand, that's where they came in to play, uh, and only come into play at a, a reasonable request. I'll go back.
Yeah, the only, the only lease I've seen is between the school district and the city. And it's renewable every ten years. It comes up next year. So to me, that's all, I mean, that, what you're talking about, like county involvement is not listed in our current lease agreement.
No.
But you're just given the history.
I'm given the history of how, of how we ended up with the lease that we have, the language started with when we got moved over.
Okay, cause that's not in the current.
No, no, absolutely not, no.
That's my thing.
I think we're always confused as well.
The lease agreement is just between the school and the city. It has nothing to do with the county.
Mr. Pierce, then, then like I said before, that hundred hour, that was an arbitrary number that we have found. But the thinking behind that was if, if you leave that school or if you leave your shift as a, as a sheriff's deputy, you know, and you go coach a, a team or you go help with the drama club or you go help a concession stand or whatever, you're, you're assimilating yourself more into the community. You're creating a group of friends around you. And, and that was the whole reason for that settlement is they were just, they felt like they were part of the community, not just an employee.
And that was part of the More to More Haven program that we all pitched in.
And that, and that has worked in, uh, where the, the More to More Haven people, when they came through and did their, they showed studies where that has worked in communities. Not a pie in the sky, just idea. It, it has one.
But where are we with the More to More Haven? I mean, we, the school, we never really got anything from that that I was aware of.
The school's part of More to More Haven. There's a new elementary school sitting there now. So that element went out. The city's part was the downtown area generated, but it was mostly, um, when COVID hit, it, it kind of that, that kind of stopped.
So there was a website created.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And that's about it, right? We got a website?
Yes, ma'am. It, we all, three entities had a direction and a task that we were supposed to achieve.
Yeah. And I think ours was housing, it was school.
And, and that was one other thing I was gonna address when you talked about the housing. Before you go working out, the numbers of what you're gonna do and how you're gonna do it, you gotta find the property to do that. And the city of More Haven, but does not have property. School doesn't have property. So you are gonna eventually fall on a private land or never purchase property.
We have property. We have property. It's just, you know, we have property. We have the property out of Washington Park. And we have the property right across from the high school.
And, and, you know, when you tear down the elementary school, you'd have some property there?
Not for housing, no.
But a couple of triflexes there.
It's a possibility.
Yep.
We had a lady approach us at the board meeting. She owns a property down the street near us. She wanted to do, and affordable housing, but she wanted sewer. But, uh, I don't know, I don't remember her name, but oddly enough, she was for real. She did come in and ask us. It was, it was.
And Beth, I, I wanna add something real quick about the ball fields. Calm down, Mr. Carlisle.
I'm calm.
That ball field from the get-go has been kind of, everybody wants a piece of something down there. Whether it's the city, the school board, the county. And we've lost a lot of chances to make something great down there. Because whether it be ego, whether it be funding, I, I can't tell you why. But, you know, there's two concession stands within fifty feet of each other. There's concrete lights on one field and telephone poles on the legs. I mean, we have squandered away opportunity due to whatever, egos, money, whatever. And we've lost a chance to make something nice. Whether the school funded it, the city funded it, the county went in and halves and we all funded it together. No organization and no thought process has been put into those ball fields. And I know Jake, Mark and I have met down there. We had plans to do the big field and how we got to do it. And unfortunately, correct me if I'm wrong, Jake and Mark, didn't even have kids go out for the ball that year. So why spend the money? We can talk about spending to do it. But, my point I'm trying to make, and I apologize, there has been no dialogue between the three organizations to make that field nice. There has been no dialogue between the three organizations to make that field nice. And we, and we could have. The, 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 the school board went down there and didn't ask nobody, just build a big old nice concession stand. And more power to y'all. And y'all, some of y'all weren't even on the board when this happened. But it made us feel like, oh, so y'all are just gonna take your two fields and not worry about our two fields? When we could have all got together. And the excuse I got was, well, we couldn't get the grant without y'all. Well, what do you mean? Did you even ask? We could have had something, those, there's five ball fields down there, but we could have had something super nice. And because this group as a group, and I say this group, I'm not meaning any one person.
Right.
Would not talk, would not, whatever, put their egos out. We, we missed the opportunity to have something nice.
And that's why, that's why these meetings are taking place again. COVID messed us up.
I got one more thing for that right here. You could, you might know, cause you were involved with this, with the new bus barn, the facility. It's one, Mr. Gressis, help me with attention, please. And I, and I asked this question at one of our joint meetings. And I asked where the driveway was gonna be, and the gentleman said in the middle of, about the middle of that pole. Which is where the driveway is now. And the driveway I'm speaking about is to get to the girls' high school softball field.
Could y'all pull that up on screen so that everybody understands what he's talking about? My intent.
Yep.
And from my experience, being involved with Little League, like he said, there's three fields down there. At this time right now, when you have a girls' high school softball game, there's no place to park. I don't know if you have a plan once you start remodeling over there to make parking. But what we had talked about was deed us Field A, which is the huge field. Take that field, use half of it for parking for your facility to access your ball fields across the swell that you take care of. Get away from the city, taking the lease agreement with the city. Give us the rest of the property, get out of the lease agreement. Let us rebuild our own two ball fields around our concession stand. Take the first big field and use it for parking to enhance your facility. Cause there's, right now, there's no, there's no way a bus can get there, and ambulances cannot get back there. And at the same time, we would make that one field a larger parking lot, and we'd all be able to share it. And it would, it would definitely, there's no reason for the city of Morehaven, in my opinion, to have three giant ball fields up there. We don't have enough kids there. It comes to the point where it's increasingly kids, then we could possibly push them onto the biggest, the big field in the back that we do not use anymore. But I would like you to think about taking that first field, did the big one, A, Field A. Right where you're driving, right behind our backstop to get to your property.
It's adjacent to the bus barn.
Adjacent to the bus barn, so you're, you're, it's adjacent to the bus barn, the big one. Take that, turn the half of it into a parking lot, the other half of it into batting cages, whatever you need as far as a parking lot to turn a bus around, keep ambulances there, and provide proper parking. Because your softball team is always one of the best ones in the state. But then when the people come from out of town, they're parking in the sticks to walk up there. I'm gonna do it. I, I'm sorry.
Do it.
Where am I at? The ball field, right there?
It's still there, but it's not moving.
No, 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 no.
That's the old bus barn.
Okay, this is, this is the bus barn now. This is the new bus barn, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you're going to access your field back here, coming through this right here. Now you have no place to park. If you eliminate this field, which is too big for any youth sport right now, cut it in half. Make this your parking lot, deed the city of Morehaven, everything else on the other side. You're out of the lease agreement. You can fence your property off and lock it however you want. I'm sorry, I'm not a left efficient, but I see you looking at me, but this is something that we had spoke about. But, and then you can, you can fence your property off and, 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 and don't have to worry about it. But, you understand what I'm saying, Mr. Gressis? To make proper parking facilities access to not just your field, but to the other fields that we would be able to use.
So I'm gonna throw my three percent in there too. With us fixing to demolish some of the elementary school after our bill, this does open up the ability to have a natural sports complex with all of this property.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, those two.
Children, so these two will stay.
And, and, and now, and now we're going to redevelop our ball fields for the barement of our children. Now we go, whether we can get a grant or not, we get a price tag and we go, the city goes to the county and says, we're trying to build a facility for all, a sports complex like Okachobee has. Which eventually, the sports complex possibly in the long run would be a swimming pool or a skate park in that. The county doesn't have a sports, yes sir?
Real quick, Bonifay just got a three million dollar grant to upgrade our rec center. That you could qualify as a school system, but you couldn't get it. But they can get it, the county can get it. And they're pretty, they're fairly available, cause, and I also ties in tourist development, having a, a park where you could actually have softball tournaments, basketball tournaments, that brings a lot of money into this. That's time the tourism thing, but we, we've got three point one million, I think, to just upgrade all of it.
Did, I thought we, there was, we did get a grant. Wasn't there a grant for, that they used to, to roof the Chalnica grounds, the rodeo grounds?
That was a F tax, a Florida program.
That, that wasn't the bed tax?
No.
No, that was.
But I'm just thinking, if you, you said that there was such stipulations on it, Mr. Carlisle, so maybe, like what Jake's saying, or what several people have said, you know, softball tournaments, baseball tournaments, I don't know. I've written a lot of grants in my life, and I can tell you that it's all important.
Well, if you, if you come up with a good concept plan, just if I may tag you on to what Mr. Iger said, you can come up with a very good conceptual plan of what you wanna do and some evidence. There's F D A grants that are available, full recreational facility, I'm sorry?
That's what we got for you.
Well, let me ask you, and I'm just asking, why couldn't we turn all four, or actually five fields into a sports complex? Shared between the school, the city, and the county?
And you're not saying what we do right now?
I mean, we, we had planned on having like a community meeting to kind of discuss really what's, what, what's gonna happen here once we knock down all this. And one consideration that I was throwing out there is rebuild our softball field here. And so it'll be back to back with the baseball field, we share parking right here.
How many fails?
Well then.
But in that way, it's very close to the school. We, and then we would still lease out that property that's on the, on the south side down here. And that way, you would have a whole.
But do you understand what I'm saying? Why would we want, Jake says we don't need four fields, but then again, what about we wanted to host a Little League tournament or a softball tournament? It, it, it makes it more.
But, but we were thinking.
Where we're at.
A quadruplex, right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, right.
Leasing all of this out, including these two fields here, and putting softball fields where the old elementary school was. That was all good.
That would work. As long as your lease allows them to comfortably refurb it. Cause right now, like Jake said, those fields are massively large.
And that was one of the issues always with the city council leading up to this, was as he just spoke of, these, these tournaments are huge. And that's one reason why the ball field, the bigger field had never been done because of all the requirements. The city didn't wanna go and jump in and spend the money to refurbish the fields in the last, since the talk of the new schools began. Because at that time, we didn't know if the school was gonna go there. We didn't wanna put, you remember that? We didn't wanna put money in to refurbishing it if we did not own it, or we didn't have a substantial time lease. Because to refurbish the ball fields, it's, it's gonna take, you know, better than I knew how much money it's gonna cost to put it in. So that was why I was getting away from the lease agreement totally, totally. And that was my fault, Chris.
Was it?
Yes, 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 yes. All right, I'm sorry.
And he made, and, and I forgot your name, but the city basically had to own the property to make a triflex out of it, or a quadruplex out of it, to get the grants and some of the funding. But, if, and I see where the city, where the school board's moving all theirs, and that's, that's a smart move, but, Jake, I mean, like, you know I want all four of them. Actually, I want all five of them.
Well, you can ask for all five of them, maybe they'll allow it to have two. Okay, the next item is adjournment, that's why I want a good note right there.
Yeah, there's coconut keg in there, there's also, um.